I'll meet in order and ask Councilman Watson, ladies and gentlemen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kyle Rowland.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Littles.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have four of them.
Uh, approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Takes motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes, seconded, uh, motion to approve the minutes by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our business here today. I appreciate y'all coming and participating. Especially you, Ms. Hamilton. Full of the agenda.
Mayor, the council has a copy. There's a copy of the agenda on the wall for the audience. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none. Those who would like to approve it as we have it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is approved as presented.
Under old business, uh, we have none noted for today. And, uh, new business, request for a public hearing for Swain LLC resolution. And Swain LLC is gonna, uh, operate a Swains sandwich shop, uh, and they're gonna be, uh, downtown on the boardwalk and this is for an economic development grant in the historic district, up to twenty thousand dollars.
Mayor, you made the determination on all that, don't you?
To what use?
Yeah, okay. I, I make the motion for re- passage of resolution, uh, fifteen oh two three three.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Poole, seconded by Councilman Barton to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three is approved. And we will have, or we will hold that public hearing at our next meeting on March the ninth.
Um, next item is a resolution on approval of, um, purchase of police vehicles.
Mayor, the police department has planned to phase out old vehicles and replace them with new. Bids have been received from local dealers to replace the old worn-out police vehicles with new Chevrolet Tahos and police pursuit vehicles. You see, there were four opportunities for bids. We've received two. And the low bidder is Pete Chevrolet in Bruton for the number that is shown there on the slide. Thirty thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars each.
Make a motion that we approve our resolution of fifteen oh two two three dash one.
I second.
A motion by Councilman Littles, seconded by Councilman Poole, that we award the bid to Pete Chevrolet for the purchase of the five Chevrolet Tahos. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Ed, don't we need to discuss that part up first before we approve it, before we approve the whole thing?
What is that?
Don't we gotta discuss about the amendment to that?
I don't know anything about it, man. It, it's listed in there.
If you'll see, it is listed, it is listed in the resolution on the second paragraph, what will be done with the old vehicles that are being replaced. They will be sold and they're so identified by their, uh, the last four digits of their bid number. That's part of the resolution in paragraph number two.
You mean to dispose of the old vehicles?
Yes.
Well, you, you'll need to set up a procedure to do that.
I think, I guess I got it now that what we're gonna do now. But no, what the pressure I'm asking is, we say we're gonna approve a resolution, which is that number right there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it wasn't the whole resolution. It was part of the resolution. Am I correct? When you had the first slide up, the Councilman Littles made a motion before you put that up there. Correct?
He made a motion based on the bid. And this resolution is awarding the bid for the purchase of the police Tahoe's to Pete Chevrolet, but it's also giving information what will be done with the old ones that are being replaced. And that's the one I believe that Councilman Littles made the motion to. Is that right, sir?
That's correct.
I'm gonna say this again. Normally, and I say this again, when you put it up there, he made a motion to approve that resolution. I ain't have time to look at it yet. You know, he just, normally you'll put a slide up there, we'll look at it. It's up there for you to look at to approve. That's all I'm asking. I didn't get a chance to see it.
He was just very quick. He made his motion before I got to put the slide up there, Mr. Watson.
Okay.
Let's do any other discussion. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Upstaying.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
No.
Councilman Barton.
No.
Motion.
Mayor Lovelace.
Uh, yes.
Question. Can the mayor vote on the purchase of vehicles in order to be financed from the bank that he's on board? You can't vote on it, can you?
If we were voting on, uh, if we were voting on, um, financing.
Right.
I would abstain if we're not voting on financing.
This is simply to purchase.
But always tied together. It's tied together.
It's a separate resolution to vote on financing.
I understand it's a separate resolution to vote on the finance. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But it's all tied together, councilor.
No, we may decide to pay it out of our own general funds. We don't have to finance it. We have that amount of money. Motion passed.
Yeah, two and two in the council and the mayor broke the tie.
No, but he, he voted a yes. So it's three to three then.
Abstention is counted as a no vote.
All right, so it's a tie?
No. Motion fails, right?
No, it's a tie with, with the mayor's vote. It'd be three, three with the mayor's vote. Correct?
I'm under the impression that abstaining must be counted as a no vote.
That is correct. So a motion got passed with the three to three. Motion fails.
Next item is a land and water conservation grant.
The city applied for a land and water conservation grant to be able to use the money in developing the CCC part. This is just standard procedure of a grant whereby we acknowledge the project number, the amount, the amount of the city's obligation, the address or the location where the project money would be used. Also giving the mayor the authority to act on behalf of the city and sign any necessary documents. It's a standard form that has to be used to send back to a DECA.
I'll have a motion for approval, resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash three.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Barton to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash three is approved. You see on the map, that area right there that has a little bit more of a highlight around it than the others. That parcel right there is being identified by the laser. Had a dilapidated building on it. Some of the material was salvaged. A pile of heap and a pile of rubble was left behind. Attempts to get the owner to clean it up were unsuccessful, so we put it out for bid. And we've had the property cleaned up. What we have today prepared is a resolution where we can place a lien on that property and recoup the city's money from having to clean it up.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Watson to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash four is approved.
It's right here.
Good evening, council, mayor. Uh, we're, uh, we bid, uh, sewer job on West Alexander Monday. I mean, uh, last Thursday. And, uh, anyway, we're here to show you all the bids on it and get approval on them.
You have a bid tab in front of you, uh, fairly complicated. There were seven bidders on the project. The low bidder was R and B Construction out of Andalusia. Uh, the, and this was bid with sales tax or without sales tax. There's a new law that was passed, passed about a year ago relating to sales tax that y'all can bid a project and it's not subject to sales tax if we go through a su- certain number of hoops. So without sales tax, the low bidder was one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. We've worked with R and B on a number of prior projects. They're good folks. And I recommend that, uh, project at Alexander High could be awarded to R and B Construction Company. And I think there's probably a resolution to that effect. Construction would probably start in thirty days. We got to go through all the bonds and insurance and all that to make sure all that's together. Any questions from the council on this? Thanks.
I make a motion for resolution fifteen oh two three three five.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Poole, seconded by Councilman Cotton to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
No.
The motion passes. Resolution number fifteen dash zero two two three dash five is approved. Thank y'all.
I call Earl Lynn.
Evening, mayor and council. Uh, I'm Earl Lammer at a managed airport for the city and I'm here on a, uh, request of the mayor to come and present a proposal on a piece of developmental property that, uh, we've, we've currently got a, uh, purchase option on this property. It's owned by Cedar Creek Land and Timber and it's on the J Road, which would be north of the airport. Reason we're looking at this, uh, yeah, there. Steve's showing you. That's, uh, the road just above that's the, the J Road, leaving at the crossroads right there in Riverview. That property is, uh, the only flat piece that could be developed either now or in the future should we ever have some kind of economic or industrial inquiry or expansion for the airport. We have a, it's the only piece, uh, not owned by the airport. Everything else we have on, we, we either can't use, it's tied up, all that infield where it says Bruton Municipal Airport. We can't build anything in that large center section. And, uh, most of the surrounding is, uh, lack of better word, swamp. It's, it's, it's unusable. We have a piece in front of the National Guard Armory. It's about twenty-five acres. And, uh, we feel like it could be limited in size on some, some developments. But that piece, that piece is available should we decide to purchase it. Now, we, we haven't committed to a purchase. And the reasons I'm here, and, and I laid this proposal, uh, it's, it's, it's there in front of all of you. But we, we've got a proposal from the engineering firm that the airport uses for our consulting. They're, uh, Barge Wagner Sumner Cannon out of Dothan. And the first page that you see, this is the scope of, of services. And what they're proposing to do for us is help us make a educated decision. Is that a good piece of property? Or is it not? They're gonna go in and, and we've got agreement with Cedar Creek Land and Timber Farm to go in and do some soil boring. They're going to, uh, I think they use the word delineate, decide if there's any wetlands that, that would be deemed unusable. Uh, it could get in a mitigation system, situation on wetlands. They're gonna do a, uh, a study to determine the, will it perk? Decide if, if, uh, what situation we get in, if we got in there and needed sewer. And, uh, also look at, at water runoff, the control of the natural flow of water on that larger piece of property where it, it would be workable to an inv- uh, development and not damage any of the surrounding, uh, landowners. And the, uh, I didn't add that up on, on the sheet I gave you, but it, if we agreed to do the study, it would be a total of, of, uh, where it says on your sheet, total basic services is five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then it would be, uh, they'd have to do a survey. They, they, they won't do it for me on a, they wanna know exactly where they are on the corners. So the survey's twenty-seven hundred dollars. And then the geotech is, uh, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one seventy-five. That's for the company to come in and do the boring and analyze the soil. What's under it, what's the load capacity and whether or not it'll perk. And then the wetland delineation, uh, they've gotta look at, uh, every square inch of it to determine, is there any wetlands on that property that would be deemed unusable? And all this is for a total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And this, and that's the reason I'm here tonight. We wanted to, uh, and I'll take questions, see if you, the council would approve this, uh, consider this. And this is just for the study. And then that would, that would educate us to whether or not this is a viable or a good investment for the city for the future. Any questions?
Yes, sir. What is this piece of property? What are we gonna do with it when we purchase it? In your opinion?
If, if we bought it?
Correct.
Well, uh, un- under, I guess I'd use the word guidelines. We, the board and, and I think we may have it in our verbiage somewhere that if we, if we solicit or secure any industrial development at the airport, we want it to be aviation-related. Otherwise, we, we wouldn't wanna buy this and then put a steel mill on it. You know what I'm saying? We want it to be compatible or in the best case, an aviation-related. And what, what, one situation would be what they call, uh, oh, it's, um, M R, M R O, I think, military rework, like they have in Enterprise. They've, the military has a, a lot of vehicles, airplanes, helicopters, that they're, they're wore out from use over in like, so, then in the desert. The dust, so they bring them back and rework them rather than scrap them. So there's a, that's a quite an ongoing business now for, for a lot of companies to take these in and they take them all apart and put all new bearings and stuff that sand wears them out. And then they, they bring them back up to spec and put them back in military service. That'd be a, that'd be one example of a, of a, of, of business that would work there. The beauty of it, Steve, if you will, put that up again.
Map?
Yes. The, one, the, the real draw or beauty, see it's, it's, uh, it runs along one of our runways. And, and if you have something aviation-related and you wanna get to the runway, that property has to be contiguous with airport property. And although it's a stair step, the, the airport property just happens to be in that shape. But if we had that piece, then we'd have the property, we'd have ownership all the way from the J Highway to the runway. Now, we would have to build a parallel taxiway uh, to, to get onto the runway, but that would be an FAA-eligible grant to get a taxiway. But, uh, that's, that's one reason this piece, and to be fair with you, we probably do not have a current need today. But if we, if we consider buying it, you know, it's kinda like the egg and, egg and the chicken. We, we, uh, we can't promote the property unless we own it. And we really don't wanna buy it unless we study it. So we're kinda, kinda hung into that, uh, to consider trying to make a purchase on it. We need to know, is it a good piece? But that's the only piece. I will say where the, where the airport comes to a V, that goes up quite a hill. The terrain back there, uh, that'd be, uh, that'd be west. The terrain rises up, uh, some of you joke, uh, Councilman Watson probably remember the old, the old clay pit on top of the hill up there where the county used to get dirt. It's up a hill. And you, you really can't use terrain with an airport. It's everything you do there's gotta be flat. So it, it starts limiting us. And if you look at the Thomas Road and then the highway and the J Road, we've got a lot of property, but we're kinda cornered in with three highways. And that's the only piece, and the National Guard Army owns about half or so of the, the piece from the armory to the north. That property line's not on there, but that's the only piece of property in the future that could be a, a central piece of development.
On this piece of property, would you mind taking, uh, the laser and show me where that hangar's gonna be and also the taxiway? Take his laser.
I, I can, I can show you the, uh, I can show you the taxiway. The hangar, if there were a big building, a big developmental building, I can show you where I think it might be. But part of that, uh, part of that discussion about that would come from this study. Depending on how the water's running and the, the permeability and the compactability and all of that property. Uh, then that's one reason we could have let, uh, we could have given this to different engineering. This is not, this is not really a, uh, anything special to do this study. But we let our, our airport group have it because that's, that's part of what they're gonna tell us when they're through. Where on that property could we put the building? That'll come out of part of the study. Now, the hangar, Steve, if you'll show them the, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the parallel taxiway would go from right here and it'd go right down through here, all the way to the end. See, uh, on, on an airport, kinda like a, an interstate, you can't just come out in the road. Interstate's gotta have exits. On the airport, we could not come from this property, for instance, if our building, if our building was right here. And I would, that would be maybe my guess, somewhere in the heart of it. But we couldn't just come out and come onto the runway. You can't come out in the middle of the runway. You come out and hit a parallel taxiway, then you go down here and enter or take off this way. Or you come down and go down the taxiway and enter or take off that way. But that, like I said, that would, if, if this happened in the future, we can get funds for the taxiway from the state FAA. But I can't really tell you where that building might be without some, some, some studying.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll have to watch and approve this study.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Barton to approve this feasibility study concerning development of property near the airport. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
I vote no.
Councilman Cotton.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Littles. Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and the feasibility study is approved.
Do we have any announcements?
No announcements, but I have three comments. First, from Vance Kilgore.
It's that time of the year with the quarterback club. I got Randy Whitney, the president. I'm Vance Kilgore, the treasurer, and we would like to ask y'all's permission or y'all, ask y'all to waive the daily rate for the carnival. It's going to be on April the fourteenth through the eighteenth. Uh, they'll be coming in like they normally do and on that Sunday and setting up and running pretty much that week. It, we'll do like all we've done in the past, make sure it's cleaned up when we're finished and, uh, kind of the same, same thing we've done in the prior years. So we have to ask y'all's permission to waive that.
Yes, sir. What's the dates again?
Uh, fourteenth through the eighteenth. April, April, April the fourteenth through the eighteenth.
I'll have a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Cotton to approve these dates for the quarterback club to put on their annual festival in that they're waiving the daily rate for the charge associated with it. Is there any discussion?
Do you guys, you clean up that or do, does the carnival, uh, people clean that up?
We, it's kinda, they do a really good job, but we kinda come in after it and police anything that's a problem. But normally we don't have a problem. They do a pretty good job. We've been using the same company for, I don't know how many years now, but they do a really good job. Very good people to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Littles.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Permission is so granted. Next, we have an Alexia Swain.
Hello. My name is Alexis Swain and I'm actually here today on behalf of Trustmark National Bank's Relay for Life team. And we are actually requesting the use of Jennings Park for next Saturday, March seventh, for the remainder of four hours. It'll begin at nine AM and go until one PM. And the event that we're doing, they did it a couple of years ago at Jennings Park. It's called Barks for Life. And the format will be set up like a Relay for Life that we have, only it will be, people will buy tickets in order for their pets to participate in all sorts of activities. The main concern, we are following the rules and regulations set by the American Cancer Society and that includes having a veterinarian on site for the whole event. And Dr. Thompson's office has agreed to sponsor it. He and his staff will be there along with, um, He and his staff will be there, along with rules about leashes, they all have to be six feet, vaccinations. Each owner will be required to clean up after their pet, and if they don't, my team has fifteen team members that will be there, and will do all the cleaning up that's not done by the pet owners.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Cotton, to grant permission to use Jennings Park on March the seventh, nine AM to one PM for this pet's participation in Relay for Life. Is there any discussion?
Let me ask you one more time. You said you have, the pet owner cleans up after their own pet?
Right, we're gonna have-
And then you have, then you have someone to clean up if they fail to do that?
We will. From nine to ten, we're having a registration, and that's where we're gonna strictly go over all the rules with each pet owner as they sign up for the event. Like I said, that is one of our rules, and if they don't, I have fifteen team members on my Relay team that will be there to clean up the excess.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little's?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and permission is so granted.
Thank you.
Third, Stephen Smith.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Relay for Life team from D.W. Matt Mellon Hospital. They are looking for permission to hold a walk and a run on Saturday, April the eleventh. It would begin at eight o'clock at Encore Fitness, proceed down Bevel Avenue to Henderson Street, back up Evergreen to the Bruton Elementary School, back on to Bevel, and would end at Encore Fitness. They will have signs marking the route, along with volunteers at each intersection, and in years past, they've had a police escort at the beginning and the end of the walk race. I've already talked with Chief McGugan about this, and he told me that as far as the Police Department is concerned, we have the clearance to go ahead and hold this walk and run on April the eleventh.
Let me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned a lot of streets that you guys are gonna be in and out of, and you said that the police chief told you that you would have an escort from the beginning to the end. Is that right? Did I misunderstand you?
Yes, but what I mean by that is they'll have a car that leads them out in the beginning, and then there will be a car that comes later and follows up at the end. It's not going to be a matter that they're gonna tie the Police Department up for that amount of time, or have them at each intersection.
So I guess what I'm saying is, in your street crossing and that sort of thing with a large amount of people, you're just gonna be, just gonna run out in that street?
No, 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 they're going, they will have, there will be volunteers on hand to assist in those crossings and to direct that, to avoid that type of situation.
Who are the assistants?
They will be from the team from the hospital. These people have worked with this program each year, so they are familiar with the rules and regulations required to carry this out in a safe manner.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilman Cotton to grant permission and approval to do this, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Little's?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and permission is so granted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Those are all I have, Mayor.